Good evening, everybody.
Evening.
Evening, Mayor.
This is the regular meeting of the National Town Council, the night being Wednesday, July 26th. And for the record, it's 7:00 o'clock. We're meeting tonight because of our meeting on the 4th of July. Fell on the holiday and we got rescheduled to the night because of many, many things, people getting in and out of town. So now we're off and moving. The first item of business, if I consideration of minutes of Tuesday, May 2nd and Tuesday, June 6th, our regular meeting minutes. Does the Chair here motion minutes be approved as they're written or are there corrections?
Second.
It's been moved to second that the minutes be approved as they're written. Is there any discussion? There being none, all in favor indicates, so we're saying yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no? According to their approval. We've had no requests of citizen comment, so we'll move on to our items of consideration tonight. The first one is sort of an oddity about the discussion and consideration of a national Chamber of Commerce voting delegates. We have been asked by the Chamber of Commerce to appoint someone as a delegate to go to their meetings and vote in a proxy in case they cannot be there. I understand this is sort of standard business, but something we've never done before. You know, we've got a bunch of committees we all serve on, and this was different and unusual as Hank could put it on the agenda, because it's just kind of unusual. So I guess we're now included in that thing as part of their operational system. I don't know when they meet. When do they meet?
Well, it's been meeting at Providence Bank for the past couple of years, and this is not necessarily to have the person attend all the meetings. This is, as you said, it's been standard practice that obviously the town can't vote itself, so it asks for a delegate from the town, which my understanding has typically been the town manager. So that if there is a vote sent out to the general membership, that would be the person that would be voting on behalf of the organization or the business. Of course, any business is welcome to come to any of the general meetings, but they're not required to do so.
So you don't necessarily need one of elected officials, you just need somebody?
Just somebody to represent the town.
We can appoint anybody, right? Okay. Does the Chair here motion we consider somebody?
As I say, could that not be my Michael?
Well, I would recommend it be the town manager, as it has been for the past several years, since he is the...
Has managers in the past gone to the meetings?
We have had managers come to the meetings to present information. We've also had the planning director come present information from time to time as well, and so it really... And we don't really have that many votes go before the businesses anyway, but it is in case we do any kind of voting, it would be a proxy voter.
Okay, with the Chair, we have to entertain a motion. We'll appoint our town manager to go when necessary, and our planner is a proxy when he can't go.
Mayor, I'll make that motion.
Okay, the motion has been made, is there a second?
Second.
And a second. Is there any discussion? There being none, all in favor indicates, so we're saying yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no? Okay, put that in your job description.
All right. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Okay, item B, a discussion of personnel policy, Article 5, conditions of employment, Section 4, employment of relatives. This is something to hold over from last month, when we approved the employee package, which I have right here with me in case anybody wants to see it. But we reserve the right to go back and reconsider the Section 4 of Article 5 about the employment of relatives. So we need to think a little more on it, because there was some discussion with the text of the third paragraph. If all of you've got that in front of you, I'd like to suggest in this third paragraph, I've been thinking on this thing, this sort of fits other models. In the third paragraph, the second sentence in its entirety, just leave it all out, because the problem last time was over who was who and who was what. Because the next, the last paragraph fills it, as long as you're dealing with people who are not in the direct line of employment. Is there discussion on that? Anybody given any more fault?
Mayor, right after the last meeting, I went back, because I was one of the ones that spoke up against it the last time. And I went back and reread it, and I guess digested a little bit more. And I was, I made myself satisfied with it, but like you say, if you take the department heads out, because the following paragraph covers everything.
Mm-hmm.
And I don't have it right here in front of me right now. But I'm inclined to go along with it, as long as we take that out and just make sure department heads are not the ones that would hire or supervise or manage.
Yeah, because, right, because the last sentence says, among the other things, that provided the individual not being a chain of supervision of a relative.
Right.
That takes, that clears everything.
That cleared it up.
Yeah, in my understanding.
In my belief.
In my understanding. Since this was discussion, since we've already approved the thing, is there other comments on it?
I moved that we go back and make that correction in the...
Okay.
In this policy.
Leave out sentence 2.
Leave out sentence 2.
No, in its entirety.
And amended to read, like what you just said.
For clarification, can we have sentence 2 read?
Read what?
Read sentence 2 aloud.
Read sentence 2 aloud.
That you're talking about removing.
Okay. Let me read the whole thing first. Okay, "The town prohibits the hiring and employment of a relative in full or part-time positions within the same work unit." Right, here, sentence 2. "The town also prohibits the employment of any person into a permanent position who is an immediate relative of the individual who's holding the following positions: mayor, mayor pro temp, town council member, town manager, finance manager, human resources director, town clerk, or town attorney. Otherwise, the town may employ a relative of a current town employee, provided that the individual meets the appropriate standards for the position to be filled, and provided the individual not be in the chain of supervision of a relative. An employment will be denied under the following circumstances," that goes on to other things. So what we're leaving out is the section enumerating of immediate relatives of individuals holding positions. Because all that's covered down in the bottom with, as long as you're out of the chain of supervision, it doesn't matter. And in our small town, people being kin to people, as long as you're out of, is a very possibility, very high possibility, because we've got that in different places now. I understand a lot of them are fire department cousins and different people over there. Further discussion? Any comments?
As long as you don't hire and as long as you don't supervise, I don't have a problem with it.
Mayor, the only comment I'll make is this. The only person that we have control over is the board, it's town manager. We don't hire any employees, we don't fire any employees. He does the iron and the firing, except with us. Yeah. And we have to have a meeting, and not one person can fire him. But, that's the only thing I have to say on it. We don't have got a supervision over employees. Right. Other than the town manager. So we're kind of out of that, and then the other people, the finance director, and the human resources director, clerk, and those other people, out. Okay.
We set the standard, and that's important.
Yeah. Well, I think we've did pretty good. Yeah. We keep some employees and... And I don't have any, I don't have any problems with anybody, anybody's child or relative, as long as they're qualified at the job and got a degree. Okay. Okay, as I recall here, Larry made a motion that we take out the second sentence of the thing.
I did.
Okay, was there a second to that? I don't recall one.
Well, I thought we had a second, because we were discussing it.
Well, I...
I'm sorry.
The discussion started and continued, started and continued. So I assume we had a second.
Okay.
Okay.
Who wants a second?
I don't know.
Okay.
We need a second.
Who wants a second?
I'll say it.
Okay, try one second. Okay. Okay, now we're down to a vote point. That says further discussion? No more discussion? Okay, all in favor of leaving out the second sentence, and making the third sentence all-inclusive of everything, indicates over saying yes?
Yes.
One, two, three?
Four.
Did you say yes?
Yes.
Did you say yes? I did. Did you say yes yet? Okay. You can amend that, Mr. Manager?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. We go back to my agenda here. Okay, the next item is the consideration of a resolution to amend a capital reserve fund established July 1, 2017, for the town of Nashville. And as this is a resolution, I need to read it, so just be patient with me. So, "Resolution to amend the capital reserve fund established July 1, 2017, for the town of Nashville. Whereas, under North Carolina General Statute 159-18, the town is authorized to establish and maintain a capital reserve fund for any purpose for which the town may issue bonds. And whereas the town council, some sort of, where its council members deem it is in the best interest of the town of Nashville and its citizens to establish a capital reserve fund to fund anticipated capital improvements. And whereas, the capital reserve fund will be used in conjunction with multi-year capital improvement programs to be reviewed annually during the town's budget process. Therefore, be it resolved by the town council, North Carolina acting through its council members, that, one, the capital reserve fund originally established July 1, 2017, is hereby amended as allowed under NCGS 15918. The capital reserve fund shall remain open and accumulate funds for a period not to exceed five years unless renewed by town council. Number two, the capital reserve fund is established to provide funds for anticipated capital improvements as identified in a multi-year capital improvement program, and may include the following: providing parks and recreation facilities, providing public buildings, providing public vehicles or equipment, providing streets and sidewalks, and/or providing information technology. Three, the town shall develop a multi-year capital improvement program and review it annually during the budget process to determine capital needs. Number four, the town council will appropriate and transfer the amended amounts of $544,889 from general fund revenues, and $89,100 from enterprise fund revenues in fiscal year 2017 and '18, and will appropriate a transfer of no less than $100,000 each fiscal year until June 30, 2022. Number five, the town council may appropriate and transfer additional funds to the capital reserve fund from time to time, and in its discretion. Transfers to the capital reserve fund should be accomplished by amendments to the capital reserve fund resolution. Number six, this resolution shall become effective upon adoption, adopted as 26th day of July 2017." That's all. Okay.
Mayor, does this amend the June 28th?
Yes.
In other words, it takes the place of?
It takes the place of it, yes. Okay. The Chair here motion we approve it? What's the question?
I can probably explain this.
Okay. What's the change for?
The logic behind the change, the text is the same as what we have previously passed. The only thing that changed was the numbers in Section 4. And those have been revised downwards. This was just to assist in the finance department. What's changed is not any money that's being spent, it's just only allocating money to the capital reserve fund for expenditures that are going to occur in future years. So items that are going to be borrowed in the current year wouldn't be put, those funds wouldn't be put into the reserve fund, because then the funds will be put into the fund and then taken right back out in the same fiscal year. So just for, just for accounting work, it's just a little simpler. But it's not changing any amount of money that's being spent, or what we're allocating it towards.
So we went from $1,073 to $627. That was quite a change, that's what I was wondering about, the rationale.
Right. That was the reason for the numbers being changed.
Yeah. Yeah, the numbers went down, because some money we're already spending out of the budget as we go forward.
That's right.
Okay. Other questions? Chair here motion we approve the resolution?
Some aid.
It's been moved to second, we approve the resolution, it's read. Now is there a further discussion? Okay. All in favor indicates, so we're saying yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no? According to, we are, have passed the resolution. Okay, now item numbers, number, number, number D, is consideration of interlocal agreement between the City of Rocky Mountain and Partnering Agency for the use of the 800 megahertz radio system. This is different from the Viper system that we're working with, with the Rocky Mount, I mean, with the Sheriff's Department, layers of, rest of the police. This is something to do with the City of Rocky Mountain, the fire department talking to each other with a no-money exchange. Could you explain the details on that for us, Hank? Because it's technically unbelievable.
Sure. Well, rather than reading this, I'll just try and explain what's happening here. This is an interlocal agreement, which is why it's being brought to council by state statute, all interlocal agreements have to be approved by town council. This is just the City of Rocky Mountain allowing other fire departments to be able to communicate with them on their 800 megahertz radio system. The only obligation on our part would be if we choose to accept this, that we may have to make some modifications to our radios, but in my conversations with Jason Edwards, that could be around like $175. So we're not having to buy any radios or make any major changes. This just allows us to communicate with each other by radio system.
And another thing, I spoke with Hank about it the other day, because I was a little bit confused start with, because I thought we were... What term I'm looking for? Mutual aid with Nash Cat as far as the radio system is concerned. We're not going to be on the very same frequency, but they'll be, it'd be like, be at the same bank. Radio systems have a frequency, then they have a bank system. So when our fire department, our police department needs to talk to Rocky Mountain, they will have to manually switch over to the Rocky Mountain bank and then talk to them. It's not, because I was thinking that we will all be chattering at the same time, which nobody will be able to get in on emergency call. So it's just another, being able to switch over to their bank and talk to them when we need to.
Mm-hmm.
And that's good, because hopefully we don't have it, and I can recall we called in Rocky Mountain up here, the fire department, twice in my memory, to help us out of the fire, but it makes it a whole lot easier if you can talk directly to the people.
I know, we've been talking to them on all for years, unless we're doing it by telephone.
And you're going through dispatch.
Right.
Now you can do it directly.
Directly. Okay, good. Okay, well, all that said and done, this Chair here motion we approve the interlocal agreement.
Some aid.
Second.
Been moved to second, is there any discussion? Okay, there being none, all in favor indicates, so we're saying yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no? You'll notify the folks in Rocky Mountain.
Sir.
Okay, the next item is consideration of ordinance to allow the sale of alcoholic beverages before noon on Sundays at licensed premises. You know, there's a bill recently passed in the legislature called the Brunch Bill, to allow alcohol to be served in restaurants and retail establishments starting at 10:00 on Sunday morning. And that's dependent upon local approval. And many municipalities have already gone for this, Raleigh, Chapel Hill, everywhere has gone at it. And the question comes up that we want to do this, so we've got an ordinance here before us for that purpose, which I can read. It says, "An ordinance to allow the sale of alcoholic beverages before noon on Sundays at licensed premises. Whereas, on June 29, 2017, the North Carolina General Assembly enacted Senate Bill 155 entitled "Act to Make Various Changes to the Alcohol Beverage Control Commission" laws. And whereas, Section 4 of the ratified Senate Bill 155 authorizes city and county governments to adopt an ordinance to allow alcohol sales beginning at 10:00 a.m. on Sundays. And whereas, ratified Senate Bill 155 was signed into law by Governor Roy Cooper on the 30th day of June 2017, and became effective on that date. Section Law 2017, Chapter 8.7. And whereas, by enacting Senate Bill 155, North Carolina joins 47 other states in allowing alcohol service before noon on Sunday. And whereas, Sunday morning alcohol service will allow the hospitality community and retail merchants in our community to meet the needs of their customers. And whereas, Sunday morning alcohol service will benefit our small business community, bring people into business districts early in the day and generate increased tax revenues. And whereas, our community has a diverse and growing population with different religious beliefs, each of which was various times and multiple, each of which was, I guess it has, various times and multiple days for worship. Now therefore, bill ordained by the Town Council of Nashville, North Carolina, that a new article of the Town of Nashville code and warrants is hereby enacted to read as follows, Chapter 8, Article 5, Section 1. Pursuant to the authority granted by state law 2017-87, any establishment located in the corporate limits of Nashville and holding an ABC permit issued pursuant to General Statute 18B-1001 is permitted to sell beverages allowed by its permit beginning at 10:00 a.m. on Sundays. Section 2, all laws and clauses of law in conflict herewith are repealed to the extent of any such conflict. And Section 3, this ordinance is effective on the 26th day of July 27, adopted as 26th day of July 2017. Okay, that, there it is now. Will the Chair here motion we approve this consideration?
Mr. Mayor?
We need to make a motion before we have discussion. It needs to come under...
Some aid.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Been moved to second, we approve the consideration. Is there discussion? Okay, John? Mr. Mayor, I would like to see this vote held off until the next meeting, because we're going to have some citizens who are going to say they were not aware of it, and we're going to get calls. I'd rather hear the calls before I do this than after I do it.
We need a public hearing.
Yep. Is there general consensus on having a public hearing, which we can do at our next agenda meeting?
We work for the people, so, yeah.
Okay, that's good. Okay, let's see. We got a, we got a motion and a second to approve this. What we'll need is a, an amended motion, and a second to hold a public hearing before we approve this.
I know that we have a public hearing before we vote.
Second.
Second, as an amended motion. The motion has now been amended. Okay. All in favor of the amended motion of having a public hearing before we consider this item? Will say yes?
Yes.
All opposed will say no? Okay, we'll get it on our agenda for our meeting in August.
Well, that would create an issue, it'd have to be in, if we're going to follow a public hearing, then we'd have to do it at the September meeting, because there wouldn't be enough notice for the August meeting, because that's next week.
No, not talk about the regular meeting, talk about our agenda meeting in August.
Okay.
So, plenty of time.
For the government meeting in September.
Right, right. Then we'll hear it at the legislative session in September. Okay. We got nowhere near the time of the Tuesday.
Yeah.
Close to legal. Okay. All right, so that's considered. All right, let's see, Mr. Manager, your report?
Yes, Mayor. You've got, we have four budget amendments in front of you that have, have all been signed, so there's nothing for the council to approve this evening. All these budget amendments are relevant to the previous fiscal year, so nothing's in the current fiscal year. So this first one, budget amendment 4, that dates back to 8/2, 2016. The reason this is being brought back for you is to make a correction to be entered into the minutes. The $699,575 you see, you see in the first line, is being increased, and then that center being decreased, the next line down, is appropriation or fund balance. That's for the CP project that we've, we've broke ground on. When we had this before you, back last year, this was a notational error. It should have said net assets to be the increase and not fund balance. And that's because this is being paid for out of the enterprise fund, not, not the general fund. Appropriation from net assets is what we think of as the fund balance for the enterprise fund. So that's the action we've taken, but our minutes need to reflect what we're doing. So that's just being reflected there.
So the $699 is coming out of enterprise?
That's correct. And this is the, the $699 we've known about all along, so it's not changing any increases in expenditures, it's just accurately reflecting the minutes and what we've already done. Budget amendment 69 and 70, as you can see by the dates that I did on 649 and 630, this was at the very end of the fiscal year, and these were just necessary to be able to pay our bills and make the last purchase orders for the fiscal year. And budget amendment 71...
I was going to ask you about the 112, and 112, and there's nothing.
112. Well, what are we...
69, that's right here.
Everything goes line by line, and then the... You see 126?
Yes, that, that should deflect 126, that bottom line. It doesn't add up correctly. But the moves between the lines are correct. Thank you for that. And in number 71, this is a budget amendment that just reflects, for the record, what you've already approved when we did our amended capital project ordinance back on June 6th, where we had to increase by 603,000, based on what the actual contract came in as being. This is just a budget amendment being conducted to reflect what you've previously adopted. No other questions on that?
Yeah.
From my report, I'd just like to point out just a few things this evening. Chief Gutbrode is in Pennsylvania, away on vacation, and since he's been up there, is welcoming a new grandson, so we'd like to recognize him and congratulate him for that. I'd like to thank Larry Taylor for him bringing out his cars and for the car show. We head out the previous Saturday out at the park. I know Margaret Bishop, who's not here this evening, I know she really appreciated having that out there. I'd also like to recognize and congratulate Michael Coleman on his recent selection to be President of the National Chamber of Commerce. We had some good fortune this, this past week in getting some national publicity on CNN. I went back before the meeting and tried to total up some of the comments and the shares and the views on that, because it's not often that you get national publicity for the town of Nashville for the Hope Initiative program. And there's no way for me to be able to track how many people actually saw that on television. I hear it's a lot, but there are totals kept on Facebook for the other people who did see those things. So what I came up with was 6,200 people had reactions to it on Facebook. There's been 1,358 comments on it on Facebook, 2,815 shares, and 909,000 views on Facebook.
909,000?
Yes, sir. So that's, that's exciting, and to get that kind of publicity for our town, if y'all have seen the clip, it highlighted that, of course, our downtown businesses and our courthouse, so that's, that's a wonderful thing. And of course, all the efforts that Chief Bayshore has done for our town in promoting the Hope Initiative program is a great thing. Chief Bayshore and I, as well as Thomas Spikes, who's one of the participants in our Hope Initiative program, also had the opportunity to sit down with Facebook and have a video chat conference with them, which is quite exciting. So the word is getting out about our program. Perhaps one of the most exciting things about it is, I know the chief's gotten some feedback from, from people as far away as Australia who have seen the clip and enjoyed what they saw. And local news stations around the country have been replaying snippets of the clip and asking the question, why is our local police department, why is our local community not doing things like Nashville, North Carolina? And that's, that's very exciting. And finally, we have a contention offer out for our library director position. That's pending a background check and a drug screening, but if all goes well, that person will be able to start next Tuesday. All right, that's it, Mayor.
You want to give us update on our camera situation downtown?
Oh, sure. Well, Brian Hassel's done most of the work for that, so he deserves some credit there. But we do have a camera that's live, it's on top of the administrative building downtown, that local news stations have the ability to tap into now, so that is, that is now operational.
How do we, how do we look, how do we get to it?
Ryan has that information.
I don't know if you watch Channel 17 or WNCN, but they have all the access to it, and their head meteorologist is on vacation this week, but it's our belief when he comes back, he'll put it right on the internet, and you can tap into it, and then he can do it whatever he wants to during his live feeds.
Channel 17?
However, if you're on, certainly, it's Channel 12, WNCN's on Channel 12 on, certainly.
Thank you.
So it's not, yeah, it's not on the website right this second, but I don't have any doubts that it won't be once he gets back.
Okay. Is there any way we can tap into it, just, just watch it during the day?
Yeah, I got it on my computer at work, and I can show you, you just have to download one system called Vic, V I C.
Okay.
And then I can just send you an email, and you can put it, put it in there, and you can watch it.
All right, please do that.
Yep.
I want to see what's going on downtown without leaving home.
You can do it.
Okay. Okay, council comments, so Mr. Taylor? Okay, council comments, and Mr. Taylor?
I'd like to also congratulate Chief Bayshore on his interview with CNN. I came, I came uptown last Tuesday, I think it was, when you, when you had it, to, just to see what was going on, but the guy, he was in disguise, he had a regular truck, he didn't have anything with CNN all across it, so he was there and I didn't realize it. So, but I was told it was going to be showed on Sunday, Sunday evening, that weekend. Well, I forgot it and I missed it. And because so many people are looking at it and sharing it, my son in Charlotte, I've got the video on my phone of the entire, entire thing. So Chief Bayshore, you did a great, great job, and I'll just give him an autograph a little bit later from him, since you are a national, national star now.
International star?
International star, that's right. So we had to get an interview, autograph from you. But you did a great job, and everybody, everybody's speaking real highly of it, so keep up, keep up the good work. Just a reminder to the rest of the council, next Tuesday, our next meeting, I will not be here, I've already told you several times, but just a reminder, I'll be leaving Sunday, I'll be out of state, but I will be back the 7th, I believe it is.
Okay. Mr. Taylor?
Yes, sir. I would like to follow counsel and say long compliments to Chief Bayshore. Very, very good honor to be recognized. Also would like to compliment, even though she's not, isn't that, Marguerite Bishop and her staff. They really worked hard to have that program at the park.
Yep.
Even though we didn't have enough people to turn out, it was not because they didn't try to get a man. And I hope they, I hope they don't get depressed, I hope they continue to work as hard, and I know they will. And so if you get a chance and you see her, tell her, thank you, what a great job she's doing. Because I'm hearing from people out of town whose children are involved in the park out there, making compliments about Marguerite and what she's done.
Yeah, I hear, I hear this too. Ms. Lynn?
I was going to ask, Brian, you going to elaborate about the Cross Street realignment? Give us an update on that, please.
Yes, ma'am. Bobby Liverman is the new district engineer, so if you haven't met him, he's, he's a really nice guy and great to work with. But if you recall, back last winter, I believe we were at the Shell building one day, we got the good news that we were going to get the project. The money's there, we're going to get the project, but the date was always December 31st of this year. We're kind of doubting that's going to happen now. The, the project is in right of way, which that means that the, the property actually has to be deeded over to the, to the DOT, and they have to do that before they can even start moving the poles and the utilities. So as you can imagine, that process is, is holding up the project a little bit. But we have had several conversations with Bobby Liverman and Gus Tullis, and they both are going to try to help us get through that process so we can move on. But right now, I don't have a time to tell you when it's going to be finished, other than the money's still there and there's no problem with the project.
So it's stuck at DOT?
Right of way.
Right of way.
Mm-hmm.
But that's part of DOT?
Yes, ma'am, it's part of the process.
What about the Lumber Street, not full closure, but...
Yeah.
condemnation.
Condemnation.
Right. Trey Barnett is working on that. Right now, I can't tell you the exact title of the process, but we're in a 30-day holding period, so he's just got to check all the boxes before you can get to the courthouse step for sale. So he's just going through them one by one.
So we don't have any...
I know there's, I know he's got to get through this 30-day period, and then he's also got to advertise it for sale, which is another time period, so I would say he's got to get through another good month and a half or so.
I was going to ask, have we made any progress on the tax ones? We were short about 43,000.
I don't know.
I wonder if Linda can share?
Collecting more tax?
Ms. Linda?
Linda?
I'm sorry, I, I don't understand.
The question was, did it link with taxes? Have we made any gain on that?
No significant gain that I'm aware of. If they come in and pay, they come in and pay. I have to get your, your ass, and your ass admitted, make your thoughtful...
The large one, the large outstanding number in that, the parties in that, I understand from hearing the conversations, is that they thought they had it paid. They did some legal work over there and got some money, and some of the funds of that went to pay taxes, but they found out that what they had paid was not this year's current taxes, but last year's back taxes. So now they're trying to regroup on this year's taxes, so where they are, where they are, I don't know. That's just what I picked up in conversation.
Yeah, and one of the things, the salary schedule, Hank, that you were going to give us?
Yes.
Did you have that?
I do not have that, I will have it at the, our August meeting. I have, I have not had that made up yet.
Okay.
Coleman?
All right. Well, I'm going to repeat the feelings towards Chief Bayshore, obviously, the reports. Talk about the success, but really, the, the big success, you know, is with all the people that we've been helping, that otherwise will be out there and, and, and either laying on their deathbed, or, or out committing crimes, or still suffering from what they're doing. And so this program, that, that just speaks volumes about what we're doing here, and I certainly commend you for, and your staff for everything that we're doing. And it's really nice to get recognition, but I'll say, you know, Hank, I don't know if it's possible in the, in the budget, but I would really like to see us get a new sign in front of the, the building over there. When I saw it on the news media, and I saw the, the sign in its current state in front of the police fire complex and whatever, I thought, you know, we need, we kind of need a new sign in front of there, but I'm sure we can work on that in the future.
It was new one time.
It was new one time. The sun's been harsh to it. But that's my comments for tonight.
I was impressed with the same sign, but I was even more impressed by that giant truck that was posed up in the intersection behind it, which demonstrates now we got our need...
For Cross Street.
On Facebook, whatever it is. Anyway, finish your answer. Got it?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I'd like to thank everybody for coming tonight, and I thank everybody who went to our CFP groundbreaking the other day. The weather was brutal. Of course, we were in a, in a not-too-windy place down at the bottom of the hill, but we launched a project now that's going to move us forward in sewer maintenance for decades. Also, I was back in the woods the other day where they were working, and they're going through some tough stuff back there. I hope they can make it anywhere close to their deadline. It's a real monkey mess back there. Okay, all that said and done, I think we've got everything covered, and we'll, I assume we're going to meet next Tuesday night, we've got business between now and then. Okay, good. Okay, the chair will entertain a motion, two will adjourn.
Summate.
Been moved and seconded, we adjourn, is any discussion?